City Council Meeting Monday, July 13th. Order, demarcation given by Mr. Kenburn and the pledge of allegiance given by Gary Stewart.
Almighty God, Author of all goodness and greatness, we give you thanks and praise. We give you thanks for this free land that we live in. We ask you to be with us this evening, especially when they're councilors, they go about public business, leave God indirectly, and all if they do. Be with our public servants, keep them safe from harm. Those that are sick, be with them and comfort them. Those who are recovering, give them strength. These things we all ask in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Phillips, will you do a roll up please?
Mr. Richard Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Greg Master?
Here.
Mr. Gary Stewart?
Here.
Mr. Mike Ashburn?
Here.
Mr. Patrick Stewart?
Here.
Before we do the adoption of the agenda, I'd like to add, item number 11, be considered a Bassmaster League Series Tournament tentatively for the first of the 4th of October for $25,000 coming out of our sales tax. Phil, do you have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Not will vote, I'll prefer say aye.
Aye.
No second. We'll go to approval, the previous minutes, June 15th, 2020, do you have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make the motion.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not will vote, I'll prefer say aye.
Aye.
No second. There is no old business, so we'll go to new business. First item is consider approval of KPS Invo's for Heritage Center addition. Our part would be $1,504.43. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I might get a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not will vote, I'll prefer say aye.
Aye.
No second. Item number two, consider approval of requests for quotes for landfill maintenance building mechanical H-back package. It was recommended, the lowest bid was just there, new business essential for $6,291. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I might get a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not will vote, I'll prefer say aye.
Aye.
No second. Item number three, consider agreement with Jackson County Commission for voting machines. Ms. Phillips covered that last week, do I have a motion to approve the agreement with Jackson County Commission for voting machines?
You make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not will vote, I'll prefer say aye.
Aye.
No second. Item number four is consider agreement with Jackson County Commission for electric pole pads. That too was covered last week in our work session. Ms. Phillips, do I have a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not will vote, I'll prefer say aye.
Aye.
No second. Item number five, consider resolution stating the rate of pay for election officials. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote, I'll prefer say aye.
Aye.
No second. Go to item number six, consider a resolution, use of electronic vote counting system. Ms. Phillips covered that as well, so I think, do I have a motion to approve that?
I might get a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not will vote, I'll prefer say aye.
Aye.
Go to item number seven, consider resolution agreement with Aldott for maintenance of the rideaway. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote, I'll prefer say aye.
Aye.
No second. Number eight, consider resolution award the Heritage Center addition bid. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
To toll or construction, 5% agency.
Yes.
So you can make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote, I'll prefer say aye.
Aye.
No second. Item number nine, consider motion amendment for the Christmas decorations for Willow Street for $9,085. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second, but I want to comment to this, it's just going to be half.
Yeah, I was going to say Main Street's paying half.
Thank you. Give you other discussion.
What part would be $4,542.50?
If there's no other discussion, we'll vote, I'll prefer say aye.
Aye.
Item number 10 is consider approval of Phase 1 of Engineering Services with the Capitol for the proposal recreation project. Do I have a motion to approve that? There's no motion and it dies. And I, we, we'll put it on the order session.
Do you need Dr. Reyes here?
Yes.
Okay, because they supported it.
Okay. We'll go to item number 11, consider Bassmaster League Series tentatively for first of the 4th of October for $25,000 coming out of sales tax, do I have a motion to approve that?
I might get a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote, I'll prefer say aye.
Aye.
We'll go to delegations, Dr. Gary's script.
Thank you, Councilman Patrick Stewart. I said Patrick Stewart because there are two Stewards in the council, so I wanted to make my own position, looking for an opening speech at this time. I have some questions I'd like to ask the council if I may, and I brought some information with me that I'd like to pass out to you, and it is large print, Rick Shepard, because when you get old and realize you may like large print, I'm going to show you the baby's birds and Mr. Baker's.
Asher.
Pass those down, that should be enough, if not, there'll be none. This is basic questions, it's just something I ran across the other day. It is good to be with you this afternoon, and maybe you can answer some of these questions for me. Actually, it's my question that has many parts to it. And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You certainly want to include units of that.
Thank you.
And council, do I keep my mask on? I keep my, put my mask on.
You can take the mask off, sir.
I always listen to council, council, yeah. So here are the questions that I like to, okay, here are the questions I'd like to ask this evening. Who owns the property located on the corner of Houston Street and Maple's Avenue, across from the Scottsboro Depot Museum? I was in the courthouse earlier today, but that was not on my agenda. Do we know who owns it? I know that in times past, the city had been involved in demolition of that project, so I just wanted to know who owned it. So who, so question number two, who's responsible for the demolishing of it, the safety and the maintaining of it? Because I rode up there this weekend, and it looks like it's reminiscent of World War II, bomb out in Germany or Afghanistan. There's tin, there's debris, there's bricks, and all type of, uh, safety hazards, I consider safety hazards. And when is the anticipated completion date? I thought the city or somebody was working on that. Guess not. And then, and then my question came up, is it an abatement issue? That's why I put abatement on that. I don't, I don't know who's handling this project. What are the plans after the project? Is it going to be a vacant lot? Or I was thinking maybe it could be repurposed for a park, parking lot even for the, for the depot, or something like that, with trees or something. And is it considered in the CDA, the commercial development authority? I didn't know, because it was on that side of the tracks, was it, did it, was it encompassed in that? Should the residents expect this city council to complete the project or wait for another? Again, I don't know who's in charge and how long. I know that it was started sometime back in the spring, because I just happened to ride up there, and it looked like I saw, I'm not sure if it were inmates or, I don't know who they were, but it was individuals, it wasn't any heavy duty machinery or anything like that. And go back to six, because I noticed that, that little motel, whatever it was, maybe it was a private property and private owner, man, that thing's demolished and cleared out before I even knew it was down. So I was wondering, who's in charge of this, this property on, on the corner of North Houston and Maple Street? And last, what image does this leave on visitors? We talked about how beautiful our city is, how beautiful our area is, what image does this leave on visitors and the residents who have to go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth? Because if it was in your area, if it was in your community, I think it probably would have been cleared up by now. And if this was just a snapshot, if somebody was just passing through, what message would that seem? So I don't know if the city council has that answer, but I decided I would ask that question, particularly since I was riding up that way this, this, this weekend. Unfortunately, it was not windy, so none of the tin or none of the debris caused any Anybody else that I have come back again? Who owns the property? Do we know?
Mr. Cook.
Cut out. Don't move your personal.
How would you play?
I know. Charles Cook owns the property. He sold it to a man who owns, does not know his name, but he came into the depot and talked to us one day. He is taking everything out of there, including the brick. He said when he gets finished, there'll be nothing left for the parking lot. Now, who will end up having a parking lot? I don't know. I also understand, isn't he taking the building across and selling it out also, that the city used to own?
Just same person?
Yes.
So it's just a matter of time until he gets everything out of there. But Charles Cook sold the property to somebody else, state owner.
If, if I may? His name is Jim Harrow. He was hired by Mr. Cook to take down the building. He purchased the building to take it down and has sold it, the contents. He has started the project. He has had trouble getting some workers, he's brought some workers in from Oklahoma. But he and I have played phone tag three times today, but he is in town, so he is, and I will follow up tomorrow and see how expeditiously he can finish. I was told that when the project was over, it would be cleaned up, it would be parking, and it would be landscaped. The basement will be filled in. And then, as far as the building across the street, that is still city-owned, we had walked through it, it was infested with termites, and it's a death trap. He has been tearing it down as he could, when weather, because of all the rain, they would go in there and work some. He is also the same company that's been hired by First Baptist Chirps to take that property down. But he goes in the communities and he reclaims old material and sells it. His name is Jim Harrow.
He reclaims it, is that brick by brick, board by board?
He literally stacks, from what I've seen and been told, he, he stacks it up based on the size of the timbers, loads it on, the bricks are loaded on pallets, loaded, and I've seen a semi there twice hauling material off. But I agree, it's, it's lacking, it needs some serious attention.
But I would imagine with rain and COVID-19, that has a lot to do with it.
He has, and, and workers.
He's not employed working from Oklahoma.
He brought some with him, yes, but.
Maybe we can get somebody some jobs or something, you know?
He, he's offered to hire.
Yeah.
So that's, that's stats.
So does he use, and I know you're talking to me, and I have the answers to this, man, does he use that duty equipment? I know he's, because I used to do refurbishing or repurposing or cleaning brick and doing stuff like that back when I was much younger. But at a point in time, you get to a point where you just have to get a bulldozer.
Well, I think that's, he's got to bring some equipment in, as, as, like I said, I haven't talked to him in a couple of weeks, so.
Yes, sir.
But it was my understanding that once it was cleaned up, then the Cook family was looking to sell or donate to some organization or something.
Does that fall in the CDA?
They're not involved in that project, are they?
Sir.
They're not involved in that project. It's just a deal between a private owner and a private, give them a guy.
Does the CDA extend beyond the tracks or does it?
Yeah.
They could.
Reason I say that is because, and I'm getting ready to take my seat, and I'll get some problems up. You know, day in and day out, you see that, yeah. I don't want anyone, anybody to lose hope or faith or, we talk about how beautiful our area is, how beautiful our city is, yet you can go across the tracks and you can see that's not beautiful. That's not American beautiful or the city where, that's something special, you know? I don't think there's anything special about that. And if it was in close to our homes, or close to our proximity, or our, our area, residents would probably keep a better finger, a better handle on it.
The property, city-owned property, we all, I walked through it earlier before that starting, and excuse me, it was going to be a pretty good deal for the city money-wise, because he was going to tear it down for, for the materials. And, and it was like the mayor said, it was a dead track over there. It was dangerous, there's holes in the floor leading into that basement, and it had been parts of it had rotted, but there is some very good material there. And he, and the way this gentleman, it was explained, made some of old brick, are really expensive, so he was trying to get all that that he could. So it could be kind of a challenge. I have to work.
It is, it is, Mr. Ashburn. I just didn't know, I know I saw some activity up there during the spring. And I also used to, in my younger days, used to repur, recycle car, so every now and then, when I see an 18-wheeler with a big, big old man in the car, it's still get the shakes, or still, I guess. But I was just wondering about that area, and if that could be addressed, or someone could look into it, I would certainly appreciate, I'm sure the residents, but certainly appreciate it as well.
We'll follow up on it, and the mayor has information. We like you, we'd like for it to be cleared up, facts too.
Yeah, yeah. The thing, there was some cones there, some orange cones there, but I'm just thinking a good couple, good gust of wind, and it could go alright. It could be bad news. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Dr. Stewart. Go to report, Mayor.
Highway Department's back on the paving project, they had been diverted to Highway 35, the left started back last night. That's pretty much here right now.
Thank you. Ms. Bailey?
Well, I just wanted to come in and thank Patrick. I don't want to put you on the spot here and all, but I know we've got kind of relaxed around here, and Patrick came in wearing his mask one night, and we've all kind of followed suit, and I appreciate everybody that comes in wearing theirs now. And I just want to say thank you, Patrick. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for showing up.
Mr. Asher?
I'd like to talk just a minute to the council concerning the problem that's been going on for the last couple of years, that I know of since I've been on council about a year and a half, and that's trucks getting in residential area over around King Street, West Cherry, West Charlotte, Chapel, Hay Street, all these streets, it's off of Rock Street, the ones that head to the west. I went to a homeowner's house yesterday that had a problem with the trucks, and we had talked earlier that there wasn't very many complaints coming to us, but the individual, he, he showed me several ruts in his yard where the trucks would get in his yard, and showed a metal cover where it was smashed patting. And then, he says, I can keep the trucks out of my yard when I'm here, but I work. So I asked him, I said, well, give me a number, what do you think, number of trucks that is coming over there? And I'm talking about the Garden Drive area and King Street, kind of where he lives at. He said, well, two a week, that would be an average, but he said, some, some days we have one day. And it's all the streets that head west, even down Charlotte, and maybe even come all the way to Square, I don't know. And what I'd like for the council to consider is maybe establishing an ordinance where we could put a fine citation along with no trucks allowed, that might deter trucks from being down in that area, you know? It's a, it's a peaceful neighborhood down all these streets with kids playing in the yard and riding their bikes, so they shouldn't have to worry about traffic trailers going down there one day in too many residential area. So I'd ask that, Mr. President, if you might put this on the agenda for the next work session, so we could talk about it some more.
We'll put it on there for the 27th.
Can I follow up?
Thank you. Yeah, it's your call, Mayor.
As you know, we met with Watersure Gas about potentially paving residential streets in King Street, and they're going to be an impetus in the very near future, it's going to be closed for about a month. They've got to do a major sewer line repair, so that street will be closed for about a month. Now, based on our discussions, probably later this month, so it's going to impact a lot of things. So this is something else.
One other thing about that, and it surprised me, there are trucks that are coming off of Hero's Drive, turning by the junior high school, winding around there, and then turning maybe on King Street or one of the other streets to get back on Rock Line, I don't know, but he showed me the side of a power pole that the trucks had been into. So that's just, that was another item that I forgot to mention. Thank you.
We'll discuss it on the 27th. Thank you. Mr. Stewart?
Well, as I was on Charlotte Avenue Friday, and South Street, I don't understand why, we have signs at the ends, of course, but I'm, I agree, we've got to put some teeth into it, because it's ridiculous that it continues. I don't know if this is bad, or if it is as bad as it was, but I hope it is not, but we've got, we've got to put some teeth in it somehow. But I appreciate all you coming tonight, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
I'm going to be long-winded, I guess, like everybody else here. When I got appointed in 2018, my goal was to represent the citizens of Scottsboro. And I made a promise to myself that I would always ask questions that I felt like needed to be asked and answered. And shortly after my appointment, this highway safety project came up, and we're dealing with it right now. And, you know, myself and intuitive council members had questions, you know, about some of the entrances into some of the restaurants, some of the businesses we were concerned, you know, with how it was being approached. So we, when it, when it came down to a vote, we voted no. You know, we voted it down, because those questions hadn't been answered at that time, and already hadn't been addressed. So immediately following that vote, you know, I don't know if it was phone calls at one hour, but it was circulated around, and three council members would vote against a ticket franchise entirely, simply untrue, because that was never presented to us like that. You know, it was just the highway safety project. So, you know, when it came up to the council again, the, it was, it was asked about the driveways to the mayor, and he addressed those driveways. You know, he told us in the council meeting that they were going to be okay, that they wouldn't be bothered. So we brought it up again, it was voted on, and it was passed unanimously. That's what should be, you know, this is, this is why we do what we do, to get those questions answered. So, you know, it's just the way the system's supposed to work. So a short period later, we met with a developer, the Hudson Group, came in and bought a potential restaurant. And their, their demands were they wanted a tax break in the amount of $400,000. Now, this was for the developer, and the red light. The red light was going to be around $330,000. So you're looking at $730,000 somewhere in there. So, you know, when this came up, I had two, I had two areas of concern, okay? Long location, is it where it needs to go? Okay? Is it helping everybody up and down the corridor? You know, and second, it's cost. I'm a cost guy, I don't know what it's going to cost, who's going to pay for it. So the night it was voted on, the, I had a traffic study in my hand, and the location, the spacing of those red lights, first one was 1,200 feet, and then 1,200 thereafter. So the location of that red light was 900 feet. So I didn't feel like that was, you know, sufficient as far as the spacing, because once you start spacing those red lights, it never changes, it's there forever. So that was a big concern, and, you know, we get called, actually called one up to go by Iron Road. So when the vote came up, you know, that's, that's what I based my decision on, added that, and we had no clear price to pay for. So, you know, I, you know, I voted no, you know, and, but after, after the vote, I met with the mayor, Mike Ashburn, and a host of others, like, you know, I know Josh was one of them, over the traffic. And it was addressed, they assured me it would work, you know, they, they did. So I was, I was still, you know, I was okay with it, as long as their guarantee's going to work. But again, I voted no, because I didn't have the facts in front of me, you know, and I won't ever apologize for that, you know, that's what I based my decisions on. So, you know, and old people understand, because when I got out this week, I was asking questions, you know, and that's fine, but I heard that they were council members against restaurants and small businesses, and none of us are that way. None of us are. We all want to see small businesses, we all want to see growth in the city. So I just felt like I needed to address that, and, you know, this political season's going to get rough, and it's just political season where it's municipalities, municipalities organize the election, you know, and just keep that in mind, that you got family members, you got friends, you got ball teams, there's a lot of stuff, and you go church with people. So just remember that, you know, when all this gets started. That's all I can do.
Can I clarify one thing? So, and I know you know, but what's going on on Highway 72 and County Park? That is not the highway safety, that is strictly an Aldott paving program, has nothing to do with the safety improvement grant at all. This is something that's been scheduled for a year, and is strictly a resurfacing component.
Just redo the place?
Yes.
We're still looking at it in January, possibly?
It's got to go out to bid this fall. That's the target, Dave. The buyers missed everything.
Thank you. The only thing I have to cover is that there won't be a meeting next week for the order session council meeting on the 27th. Just, I think we'll see everybody out here tonight. Thank you, Gary, for coming and presenting that to us. So, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I might get a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll prefer say aye.
Aye.
No second.